To reopen the Village of Bronxville Board of Trustees meeting for July 21, 2025, and ask all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight, we're going to change things up a little bit because we moved the meeting from last week to this week, and we know some people have schedule needs. So we're going to, just after the mayor's report, the administrators' report, approval of the minutes, before we start any new business, we're going to give that the time for public comment and not have folks wait until the end of the meeting because we know some of you had to change their own schedules to fit our schedules. So I will start with the mayor's report. First of all, I'm excited. Our Crawford flood mitigation plan is on our agenda tonight. That's kind of our big issue, and I know we've all been working on it for very, very long time. And I see some of the folks here affected by it, so thank you for being here, actually. Also, it was not from just mundane work, but it was a little bit of a quiet month in terms of activities. One school closed, and a lot of the organizations finished up. So I just want to say a few thank yous here. I want to thank our Chamber of Commerce for all the concerts they put on. I mean, you should see the emails of our shopkeepers who work all day at their store, and then they sign up to come to put the chairs up and the amplifiers up and the car shows. It's amazing what our shopkeepers do over and above just running their stores. So just keep supporting them is my hope. Also, a big thank you to the garden club. They have done all that work. The Bronxville Beautification Council in particular have done all the work in conjunction with our DPW staff on all the islands, the traffic calming places. And those plants are all thanks to your donations. Our DPW fellows love planting them, putting them in, but without public-private partnership, they would not happen. And then just a reminder, everybody knows how tough in the world of Netflix and Hulu, our movie theater is going to be 100 years old next year. And all I can say is, please support them because I look around and so many movie theaters are disappearing. And our theater is a nonprofit. A lot of people think it came back as, you know, just your basic movie theater, Ridge Hill type. And, you know, ours collaborates with the Bronxville Schools, Sarah Lawrence. They just do so much. And just honestly, a real pitch for having us all be here to celebrate 100 years in the theater. Bob's mother used to talk about having her boyfriends, having her dates up in the balcony of the movie theater decades ago, and we just have to keep that tradition. Yes, keep that tradition alive. She even told me she smoked cigarettes. Anyway, just support our local, you know, it goes back to just kind of think local and help local. And that's my report for tonight. And trustees, am I missing?
By the way, just the work that the BBC did with the DPW and Jim Palmer on the, our downtown hasn't looked this good in the 32 years I've lived here. It looks spectacular, so thank you.
Mayor, my understanding is one of the people who wants to speak tonight needs to leave to catch a flight at 7:30, so I'd be happy just to go right to that new business and then allow Mr. Palmer to give a more fulsome, you know, administrative's report and for individual trustees to give their reports if that's not objectionable to you.
Absolutely, trustee. I will honor your request, absolutely. All right? Is there someone who has to beat an airport? Yes. Are you going anywhere good?
Well, I had a 9:30 from JFK for Los Angeles.
Okay.
I did just get a text message, though, which is what you dread at this stage, saying it's been delayed until 10 past 10. So that's called Sod's Law where I come from originally. But thank you very much for accommodating me. I really do appreciate you moving the agenda around so I can speak, so much appreciated. So Mayor Marvin, trustees, good evening. I'd like to make a few comments.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. My name is David Wiley. I live at 47 Sagamore Road. I'd like to make a few comments about the petition that has been, that will be discussed in the agenda later on this evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. As I mentioned, David Wiley, 47 Sagamore Road. Myself and my wife Andrea have lived in Bronxville for almost nine years now. It's the only home that my son, who's a rising sixth grader at the middle school, remembers. My daughter, who's a rising second grader, was born right here in Lawrence Hospital. We love Bronxville. We're very passionate about our community. I was pleased to submit the petition that we submitted a few weeks ago to James Palmer on behalf and signed by 457 of our friends and neighbors. The purpose of this petition is to give Bronxville voters the choice as to whether village elections take place in March or November each year. This petition gathered support from all corners of Bronxville, from eligible voters in all seven districts, from registered Republicans, Democrats, independents, from the young and the old and the somewhere in between, from those that live in single-family homes, those in townhouses, those in apartments, local businesspeople, Metro North commuters, and the retired. I'm sure you'll agree that 457 signatories is really quite remarkable and shows significant support for putting this question to Bronxville voters this November. Indeed, 457 is a higher number than is voted in total in many of our recent village elections. Our request with the petition is one that's clearly entitled by New York State Election Law. The law is clear, a petition with at least 200 signatures from enrolled Bronxville voters is sufficient to require a referendum on the underlying matter. The 457 signatories, of which I'm one, respectfully asks that the village fulfills its duty to send a certified copy of the text of the referendum to the Westchester County Board of Elections by August 4, 2025. This will facilitate the underlying matter being put to Bronxville voters at the next general election, which is to take place on November 4, 2025. Thank you for your time. As this matter progresses, I'll be at your disposal to make sure this process goes smoothly and in a collaborative fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you don't have to, I don't think you have to worry. We will do exactly what we, it's legally required, received your petition, and in fact, if you want to speak at all to our council, just so we do everything smoothly and correctly. Yeah, and thank you. Okay.
Is there anyone else here who wanted to speak on that particular issue?
And what about, do we want to do any other issues as well?
Should we, in fairness to people on other issues who might have time, I think we should let anybody, Michael Lynch. And before I have Mr. Lynch from Homestead speak, I should mention, which was part of my mayor's report, there is several cases this summer zoning, planning that involved, frankly, Iona and solar issues. And council has guided me, just so people understand, the trustees' role in relationship to these boards, the five of us, Helen is away, but we are legally prohibited to interfere in any application or decision before the village boards, planning, zoning, design review. Our only role, and council, help me if I'm not, if I'm saying, our only role is the appointment of the members of those boards. And if we interfere, they actually have an actionable item. I think it's under the, in my legal background, it's under the constitutionally protected property rights. Am I saying that correctly?
And under what we call a civil rights statute.
It's under the-
Which grows out of the Constitution.
Yes, yeah, it's a civil rights statute. So just so people understand in particular about solar and Iona. But Michael, I'd love you to talk about anything you would like to talk about. I'm thinking it's under the solar because I know you have great concerns.
You're correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Marvin. Okay, so Michael Lynch, I live at 33 Homestead Road. We've lived there since '92. My wife and I, we've raised four kids. I'm here basically for the solar issue, and there's two aspects I want to bring to your attention. Yeah, I'm certainly interested in safeguarding the value of my home.
Yes.
But equally important, and maybe more important to all of us as homeowners, is to the value of all of our homes and the resale value. Just so everyone is aware, the house next door to us on Sturgis, we're right on the corner, 34 Sturgis, received approval to install solar panels on their roof. Now, when it was first presented to us, we objected, we wrote a letter. Unfortunately, we were away for the planning board meeting because it got postponed because the first analysis was that they were over coverage. On the second go-around, what I always understood is that the Design Review Committee objected on three fronts. One was coverage, two is the glare, and I'm thinking of the third one, and the multiple panel locations across the house, which is the back and the side. Now, we're on the corner, so their house is basically in our backyard. So all of the five bedrooms in our house will be looking straight at these panels out of the window on the second floor, as well as visibility from a backyard patio. Now, what I was concerned about was that the, it was certainly clear, and we listened to the video, the planning board, was that they were unclear of what the rules were to follow. And what they did not want to do was set a precedent by rejecting this permit because then they were like, well, then nobody else could ever come up with a solar panel solution. Now, look, as far as glare is concerned, the only testimony on the glare was from a solar salesman. Okay, he's commercially tied to the solution here, so I don't necessarily think that was correct. Second is we were told that the coverage was in excess of what the recommendations were. And the Design Review Committee were the experts in that, certainly not my wife and myself. And we were told that there was an independent consultant that overruled the Design Review Committee's recommendation, which at the end, on those three counts, was not to approve. That night, when we listened to it on video or the day after, it was clear that there was a lot of dissent among the committee themselves, but nobody understood what they referred to as the mandate that they had received from the trustees. So it was approved. So I think I'm coming before you today on two issues. One, on the most important issue is, like, what is the plan here? And how can the planning board move forward when the Design Review Committee clearly objected to it? That's probably the first and foremost of our concerns. And then the second would be, what's the natural recourse for us to have at this point in time? Because clearly, and you can, you know, we've talked to a bunch of realtors, and one of my four children is going to close on a house in Bronxville in Hemlock in a couple of weeks. We're all concerned about what the value of that does to our beautiful village. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, you might want to help me. My understanding as the Design Review Committee in our village, since the legal inception, and I'm not sure how everybody else does it, but for good or for ill, it's only advisory in nature. And some communities have their design review dispositive, but we've had for the last literally 80 years, our design review is only advisory in nature. So that I do understand. I don't quite understand if, what Mr. Lynch's options are at this juncture.
Yeah, so I don't know if you want me to speak to Mr. Lynch.
Probably, that's a good, that's probably, you should, that makes total sense. So I will, Michael, I will connect you to Jim, and he understands what the options you have given this past decision. Yeah.
My concern about the Design Review Committee is that these are very talented-
Yes, they are.
-experts in their field. We're going to lose them. There's a lot of frustration about the fact that their recommendations weren't even considered by the planning board. It wasn't even brought up at the meeting, as a matter of fact.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Jim, you'll make sure I'll give you all of Michael's information. And Michael, thank you for coming tonight. And I was sorry they had to move the meeting, you know. It's hard in the summer, I'm sure a lot of you know. Everybody's a volunteer, and at the last minute, when there's not a quorum or there's not the whole board, they don't like to meet with just a tiny bare minimum. So that was, I know the reason for the change, but I know it put a burden on you, and just thank you for being here. All right, since we're doing any comment on any topic, we'll go right to the public comment on anything whatsoever. Do I see a scout here? Do you, do you want to say anything? Because you are welcome to take the podium. No? Well, I'm just glad you're here. Thank you for coming. All right, then we will go. Trustees, did I miss anything?
Jim Palmer's going to say.
Right, but I usually ask you before if the mayor missed anything. Did we have anything that, and then Jim will do a lot of the administrative things for us. No? All right, right, yes.
Well, I'll just interject as those of you who pay attention to your village newsletters will know, the village, in conjunction with the Bronxville Historical Conservancy, is undertaking a fund to encourage the promotion of new trees across the village and the village's right-of-way. We have an ad hoc group that has been meeting with Administrator Palmer and Assistant Administrator Thomas Frazel to discuss the implementation of those plans. We had another such meeting at the end of June. I think we're making good progress. Occasionally, people ask me, oh, I hear this tree planting program is coming. When's it going to be here? I think we want to launch it, having worked out all the details. I think we're making good progress doing that, agreement on lists of trees, criteria, et cetera. So we're moving forward. It is coming, but we don't want to launch before we have the details worked out. But I want to thank Ellen Edwards from the Green Committee, Jack Beerworth, Peggy Conway from Bronxville Historical Conservancy, trustee Knapp, as well as Thomas for being part of that effort. I think it's going to be a great initiative for the village, and it's one we're moving forward on. So that's my report.
Thank you.
Mayor, I might just add that trustee Fredericks referenced our newsletter, and I just wanted to, there's a lot of people here tonight, which we don't always get people at our meetings, so I just wanted to remind people, if you haven't signed up for the newsletter, you can do so online with your email, Village Alerts, and also newsletter. It's quite easy, and it comes once a month. It will not come in October. We do one, I'm sorry, in August. We do one for July and August, but it will come, the next one will be in September. And it gives a really good lowdown of everything that the trustees are working, have worked on and are planning on working on, so it can, it's a great educational tool. And we've reformatted it a little bit with our new software to make it very iPhone-friendly or iPad-friendly that you can read very easily without having to click through. So, and it just scrolls now. Less pictures, but we get a lot more information readily available. So please feel free to sign up if you have not for that. And it's only once a month, so it's not going to hound your email box too badly.
And it has really good pictures, so it's-
Well, the pictures are, yeah, we're working on the pictures of this new format, but yes.
Yeah, and I would just say-
So this has been helpful with the new format, so thank you.
And to that point, I guess it segues into my report in that, yes, with the, with the new format, there are easy links to be able to go to the, be directed to the areas on the website where you can learn more information, including what the board will discuss later on this evening, which is the status of the Crawford drainage improvements. That information is available on the newsletter, on the website, and it has links, so that's helpful. Won't get into all the other summer projects that are underway, but we are moving forward with the solar installation for the DPW roof, the boiler replacement at Village Hall, the boiler replacement at the library. We still have paving projects to do in the village. ConEd is going to be doing some projects in the near future. I'll be reaching out to the residents, including the Lynch's again, regarding a section of ConEd's gas line that they're going to be replacing at the intersection of Homestead and Sturgis. I was out there today, and it's, it's a tight corner, it's a narrow street, and there's some construction, so we're, I'll be working on getting a letter out to the residents. It'll be a little bit of inconvenience, but we try to do some of these ConEd projects, actually, most of the time, we try to do them over the summer when traffic's a little bit lighter. So more to come on that. Most importantly, you had asked me just to update the community on the status of the post office. We did send a couple alerts out this week. The village did not know that the postal service was going to be closing the post office in the village. We have no association with the post office. We apologize to everyone for the inconvenience. There was an issue with the HVAC system and some electrical issues that the village had raised quite some time ago. And then, most recently, the mayor had sent a letter to Congressman Latimer a couple weeks ago regarding those items, and apparently, they got much worse. And then, last week, on the 17th, it was brought to the village's attention that the post office was closed. Just for the public's justification, currently, on the office window of the post office is that, I believe it's the postmaster of the building, even though they had changes, Valerie Jackson stating that the suspension, that is, the closure of the post office here in Bronxville is due to a safety hazard at the property where the office is housed. During the period of suspension, customers who currently receive PO Box service at the Bronxville post office will be provided with a PO Box service at the Yonkers post office, a driving distance of 4.9 miles from Bronxville. Current PO customers will continue to use the current PO Box number and address, picking up mail and conducting business at the Yonkers main post office, which is at 79 to 81 Main Street in Yonkers. And they just note that the post office lobby access in Yonkers is from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Window retail service is from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. weekdays, and 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday. Valerie Jackson closes by saying, "We apologize for any inconvenience these changes may cause, and ask for your patience as we work to restore the safety hazard of the Bronxville post office facility for your future use. The postal service will continue to communicate any other relevant information to avoid mail delivery interruptions. If we receive more information, we will pass that along to everyone." And I will say, legislator Nolan has been reaching out to a few of us, including myself, to try to keep us updated. It sounds like there's some work going on inside now, from what I can gather, from what I could tell from my last visit this afternoon, so.
We don't have, quite honestly, there's a disconnect, and it's not our congressperson's fault. It goes back to Nita Lowey. I was in there the other day, and before they closed it, the lobby was 94 degrees. And, you know, I wrote a year ago that their air conditioning didn't seem healthy for the employees, but for some reason, you know, it's federal property, and they don't like us to, they wouldn't even let the garden clubs put flowers on the property. So there's just, and I'm not sure how we fix it, and this is sort of a culmination of unfortunately not the most harmonious connection.
And of course, it affects, I think, about an equal number of people who are outside the four corners of Bronxville, and so it's really an awful inconvenience on the greater Bronxville community, not just, you know, our one square mile. Hopefully, it will be resolved very soon.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Oh, October, August 1st, your office is closed?
Uh, August, is it that Friday, August 1st? Yes, just, the board had approved that at the last meeting.
Yeah, just wanted to remind people.
Right, so Friday, August 1st, the village offices will be closed to the, to the public. Staff will be here, but we utilize it that day as what we call Records Management Day, which is a day that staff dedicate to following the New York State procedures of the State Archives and Records Administration for the preservation and disposal of records. All those papers that we accumulate over the course of years and years, and the state has specific requirements as to how long we're required to keep hard copies of records. So we apologize, but we will be closed to the public for that day. Thanks for the money.
And that's something we do every year.
Yes, yes. You just can't get it done during the day because we have boxes that staff are just moving, one placement, another, and the DPW comes in.
Jim, a question for you. The school just constructed a structure over the pumps on the school property. Are those final? Is that structure final? And is that metal reflective roof consistent with code? And is, if so, is the school exempt from?
They're exempt.
They are exempt, but I don't think it's final. I think there's, there's still brickwork to be done, but, you know, I meant to take a look to see. It's been a while since I've looked at the design, but it was something that was approved in the Bond Act, I'm going to say in the 22, 23 fiscal budget for the, for the school, but yes, the school is exempt. They don't require permits from the village, but I know it was their intention for, if you recall, when the pump system was put in, when the original five-pump system was designed, it was the intention to have a shelter, entire shelter around the structure, and due to costs, that shelter was eliminated. And I know the school was working on putting a, at least a cover in place to, yeah, to assist during severe rain events while the pumps can be manually operated. But I think there's going to be brickwork associated. I'll see if I can get an updated picture on what the final product will look like.
And is the roof going to stay the reflective silver roof? That would be great to find out.
Yes, yeah.
And Jim, just very briefly, I noticed that there's been some additional spotty repair on the White Plains Post Road up by the intersection of- on the White Plains Post Road up by the intersection of Pond Field and the Post Road. I know that some residents will have the inevitable comment, why are we getting sort of a patch approach rather than the usual Bronxville standard, strip off the layer and repave beautifully, which we all have become accustomed to under your tenure, Mr. Palmer? But I assume you will advise me and residents that, once again, Route 22 is a state road and it is the New York State Department of Transportation that is responsible for how it goes about fixing that road. So if people have complaints about it, they should really send them to Albany rather than to you.
Yes, perfectly well said. And the calls do come in. And I documented, I was out there taking pictures of the paving. I will be following up on that, that temporary job that will easily break down and end up in our catch basins. The one thing you forgot to mention is that, of course, the state decided to convey the responsibility for the catch basins they installed on 22, two villages over 75 years ago, right, Jim? So it's, we do write to them all the time on the paving. There is a new upcoming, I think I mentioned, project called Propel New York, which the residents actually should start to see information on. This is a new transmission line that is being, that's going to be coming into Westchester from Long Island through multiple communities. It's called Propel New York and it's a partnership with the New York Power Authority, and I forget the, the other entity. But in that case, there will be a new, new electrical service running down Route 22. And they're going to actually excavate Route 22, the northbound lane from the intersection of Pond Field all the way to the Tuckahoe Line and beyond. And to me, that would be another opportunity perhaps to have this entity...
When will that happen, Jim, do you think?
We're in 2025. I think the project's going to start late '26. By the time they get to Westchester, though, it could be, it could be 2027. But I asked the state DOT to be thinking about requiring as a condition of their permit approval on their state highway, since we can't do it, to require that this entity restore the road in its entirety. When we have ConEd do repairs and so forth, we require them to pay from curb to curb. So it's, it's a battle. But unfortunately, people do call us. It's terrible. They think it's ours. And as I think I told you, I was thinking, maybe we put a sign out telling people to call that state number, because people do get flat tires during the winter. And then they, and then they call and email us. It's very unfortunate. It's very sad. I can't say we're the only community that's suffering from a lack of maintenance for these state highways that used to be paved every 10 to 15 years. And now we're going well over 30 years. It's...
Okay, we will move on to the approval of the minutes. And it just reminded me in my mayor's report, I think sometimes we don't say it enough. This has been a wonderful year. We have the greatest staff. Our Lori, our treasurer's here, Mary Ann, assistant to Jim and I, and the entire staff. And, you know, what they handle day to day in such a kind and gracious way. And, you know, my job, I couldn't do my job without all of them. And, and I love my job. As I tell them, it's really hard. There are days I go in and go, this is a tough day today because you're going to have to make me look good. And that's not easy. So I forgot to say a big thank you to the entire Village Hall staff. And with that, I would like a motion to approve minutes from the executive session, the work session, the regular meeting of June 9th, as well as the special meeting we had on July 2nd. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I had given Mary Ann a few comments.
Yes, good, okay. And they were all minor changes that don't affect approval. Okay? Motion passes. And our first new business, I can just reiterate, I think what I said to David. We have a resolution petition for a referendum to change village election from March to November, whereas the village has received a petition requesting that a referendum be held on November 4, 2025, on the question whether the month of Bronxville's annual village election shall be changed from March to November. Therefore, be it resolved that the appropriate village personnel take such steps as required by law to review and process the above referenced petition. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And Mr. Palmer, I think it's, you are to move this along, correct?
Yes.
Okay, alrighty. And then, Mr. Palmer, do you want to talk even, talk about the Crawford drainage improvements? I think you, thank you for all your efforts on that. And, and thank you to the neighbors I see for their, their patience, their kindness, their dialogue and their grace in handling things with us. So thank you. I see two of, two of my favorite gentlemen in the back row, so thank you. Jim, do you want to tell the rest of the community in brief what, what the Crawford drainage is going to involve?
Sure. I'll just summarize the, the resolution before you. I'll also post this on the, on the village's website. And for the public's edification, you can find additional information on the Crawford Street Drainage Project and the village's other projects under the trustees page and the section titled Stormwater Projects. And at this point, we've been working on this project for over two years. And tonight, you would be authorizing the award of the project to the low bidder, Intercontracting Corporation, in the lowest responsible bidder and also the low bidder for the scope of work that's highlighted on the website, which includes the creation of stormwater retention areas and a stormwater channel in the area known as the Crawford Meadows in the village's records, AKA the Dog Park, which consists of lands that the village owns within, mostly within the town of Eastchester, extending from what's known as Archer, right at the end of Duesenberry Road where Archer begins. And that grassy area looking north extending all the way up to the end of Alder. So it's the green space that abuts Grove, also Middle, all the way up to Alder and extending east over to Crawford, Crawford Road. That project, that land would be utilized to have the creation of stormwater channels and also a drainage channel to address the water runoff that currently exceeds what the existing stormwater infrastructure can handle during extreme events and ends up pooling at the lowest points in those neighborhoods, which are at Duesenberry where it meets Archer, also at the end of Grove, also at the end of Middle and Alder. We've been working with that neighborhood for, well, for easily over two years. And I think some of the residents would say probably more like four years. But we did, following multiple renditions, many designs, working collaboratively with the town of Eastchester and continuing to work with the town of Eastchester, we were able to secure funding up to this point from the county after making a presentation to the county's Stormwater Advisory Board, the Planning Board. It's going before the Board of Legislators this evening. And as I said, the, the low bid reflects the, the scope of work that I highlighted. Intercontracting, Adam Mount Vernon, low bidder, has been vetted by our engineers. And they've done projects very similar to this, not so much in Westchester, but throughout the city, including projects for New York DEP for the replacement of water lines, sanitary sewer lines, and the rest of the...
And New York DEP being Department of Environmental Protection?
Yes, the New York State Department of Environmental, New York City Department of Environmental Protection. So, so certainly very qualified and they've, they've been vetted. And of course, what we still need to do for this project, and I am working with nearby residents, including one of our residents, Ben Lenz, who's also with the Working Gardeners, on identifying the trees that will be removed, trees that will be relocated, trees that can be saved. And in conjunction with that, there will also be a landscaping plan. So what, and what you're approving tonight is the work without the landscaping plan. We have not finalized the landscaping, the landscaping plan. That's something we'd like to get input from the community on. So with that being said, hopefully, the board would consider awarding this project to the low bidder and... And so the amount again is $4,397,875. And again, we've submitted a grant application to Westchester County for funding up to 50% of that amount.
And what's your thought on the county funding 50%, Jim? I know it's gone through the Stormwater Advisory Committee up there and...
Process absolutely takes time, but it's, it's part of the Stormwater Management Law, which the county adopted, I think, somewhere back in 2011. They relied on that board of appointees from the Board of Legislators to, which consists of a variety of individuals, including engineers, to review applications that are submitted by towns and villages and cities and make recommendations to the county Board of Legislators. And they approved it. The county planning board approved it. And as I said, it's going before the Board of Legislators. And so I think it's, I think it's, it's very, it's very positive. And it's a project that is certainly, especially meets the criteria of the county. And we're fortunate that we have open land there that we can utilize. We currently have a, a system, a drainage system that was just not constructed to handle the events that, that we're getting. But we have open space that can temporarily detain the water and drain it strategically.
But our vote is not contingent on county money. We vote yes, this happens.
Correct.
Okay.
And Jim, you said that the detailed plans are on the website. Do you want to just say where on the website are they? So if people wanted to.
Sure. So, yes, again, under the, if you go to the departments in the village Board of Trustees page and then go to the Stormwater Projects link, under our Stormwater Projects, one of them is the Crawford Drainage Project, and that will show you the plan. It also shows you the resolution that was approved either last month or early July, expressing our intent, the village's intent, to be the lead agency for the process, which is something that is required under Seeker. And we've since sent those notices out to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the County of Westchester, Town of Eastchester. I should, I should say with this project, even though we've been talking about detention areas, it's, it's also replacing the existing sanitary sewer lines that currently extend under Duesenberry, under Grove, and under Middle. And that is the sanitary sewer lines run underneath through that open field and tie into the Crawford, into the sanitary sewer system in Crawford. And some residents have not necessarily experienced stormwater flowing from the ground into their street, but rather their sanitary sewer line discharging into their home, because, as you know, and we've talked about for years, inflow and infiltration into old sanitary sewer pipes is, is something that happens here. It's something that happens everywhere when you have clay pipes. And when water, especially in a field, sits, it percolates through the clay pipe, which is porous. And during extreme events, there's a lot of that. And that results in water entering someone's basement if they have that, wherever the low point is. So we also received the county Department of Health approvals on that. So a lot of work over the course of the last few years, a lot of input, a lot of changes. It's going to be a large project, you know, as the board directed. Tonight, I will follow up with a letter to all the neighborhoods on the east side of the village, expressing them the further scope of the project and...
Move the link to the plans.
And a link to the plans, yep. And again, as we get more details, right now, the goal will be to, if you, if you choose to approve this tonight, for me to notify the contractor, have them start to gather their insurances and bonds. And then we'll start to work up a schedule so we can try to get this underway real soon.
And what do you think is a reasonable expectation for getting underway?
Real soon.
We're at the end of July. I think, I think real soon. If we could potentially put a shovel on the ground in the beginning of September, I think would be a really impressive feat.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to move this. Do I have a...
I'd just like to make a, a further comment if I may before we move...
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I want to thank Administrator Palmer again for the enormous amount of time that he's spent on this. I think we've vetted it very carefully. I think all of the trustees have been onsite to do onsite inspections, you know, multiple times, as well as reviewing the plans. I think that, again, just for people who may be tuning in or saying, you know, why are we doing this? I think that, again, the recent rainstorm and the pictures of flooding in New York City are a good example. The problem is when rain comes down in such concentrations during a short period of time, there's just not enough capacity in the drainage system for that water to drain away effectively. And to solve the problems that village administrator Palmer has identified, or at least to mitigate them, I mean, I don't think we can really truly ever solve them 100%. But you need to create a greater area where water can gather temporarily. It all does drain. No one's creating a big swimming pool or, you know, an artificial lake. It's just creating an area where that water can retain a greater volume so that doesn't, you know, back up into people's sanitary systems, back up into people's water systems. And I think it's just, as village administrator said, it's, it's just, climate's different and we have a, an old infrastructure. And I think, you know, this board, the prior boards have tried to update over time as, as necessary. I'm sure this won't be the last stormwater mitigation project we have, but it's one that we've identified. I'm convinced it's certainly very serious to a large number of people. And, you know, knock wood, we'll, we'll get progress made before we have another, you know, Hurricane Ida or, or other horrible event like that. So thank you, Administrator Palmer.
All right, then I need a second to move this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Can we have some public comment on this now?
Oh, sure. I had, I thought, I had the public comment earlier, but...
We need to after your speech.
Oh, all right. You, you are so welcome. Please, absolutely.
Sorry for the confusion, but I wanted to hear what he had to say.
I understand, Ben.
My name is Ben Lenz. I live at 36th Grove Lane, adjacent to what people call the Dog Park. And I'd like to just make some brief comments. This area is a resource. And for the last few years, I've been retired for six, it served two functions. One, a dog park. There are many of our four-legged friends that use this. Two, it's also a pollinator garden, a native garden. And we try our best to have native plants, plants that do not interfere with our four-legged friends. And it's become a, a resource for that as well. And now, to me, it's being expanded for a third function or purpose, which is detention. Helping drainage for those adjacent homeowners who simply have major problems with their drainage. I mean, I've lived there almost 35 years and I know... I mean, I've lived there almost 35 years, and I know some people behind me. I've seen three houses now where the garage used to be located in the back of the house at a lower level. Now it's moved to the front of the house or the side of the house at a higher level because there's simply not enough drainage. So I think that the most difficult part is ahead of us, which is the coordination with the contractor to identify what trees can be saved, what trees can be moved, what trees just will be lost, what gardens can be saved, moved, lost, et cetera, keeping in mind these three functions. I know dogs can't speak, although some of us who have dogs think that they can. But we need to keep all this in mind and to have open lines of communication going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just say before Mr. Lenz leaves the podium, the work that you, Ben, and your colleagues have done to beautify that area is nothing short of astounding. And I know it's all volunteer work, and your volunteers, you know, pay for the cost of those plants. And, you know, it's like the mayor's comments about the BBC, the volunteers that we have in the village, it just sort of grows out of seemingly nowhere and does just great things. And so, thank you. And I think that all of us, I should have just perhaps added an extra emphasis that in doing this planning, we are very sensitive to exactly the concerns you mentioned, that we're certainly going to preserve a very significant extent of what's done, consistent with what needs to be done on the drainage.
In my remarks tonight, I want to say, there's an expression, "It takes a village."
Yeah.
We have the Village of Bronxville, the DPW, very helpful with wood chips, topsoil, moving trees. We have Boy Scouts with projects, earning, doing community service for the Eagle Scout projects. We have groups of volunteers who have their own areas of gardening expertise. And it takes all of these people working together to make it what it is. And now we have another function, drainage, water retention, and we just have to work together to get it done right.
Well said. And, you know, Ben, you've always been a partner. You and I have known each other, and you've always been a partner to this village. So, thank you.
My name is Almano Genus. I'm from 30 Studio Lane. I've been living there for, I don't even know, four years, and before that Prescott Square. But my kids are up here, they're rising seniors. But thank you all for having me, and thank you, Ben. I am a volunteer gardener at the Dog Park. And one of the things that I would like to know, and would like some more elaboration on, because I've looked at the maps themselves, and I would love it if I could get, maybe sit down with someone to go through the maps themselves and see which exact areas are impacted. Some of the, I mean, this is an old layout of what I saw would be affected, but some of, you know, some of the, whether it is the piping, or we go straight through some of the flower beds. And so I would just like to understand, and if I could get just a one-on-one or some sort of meeting with someone so that I can be, we can collaborate with our team, not that we're our team, but we're the volunteers, as to what we need to rescue or what we need to transplant going forward.
Of course. We've met onsite, but the engineer's been out there multiple times, as Ben knows. We will meet again. Yep.
Perfect. And so I had another question, is once the work begins, let's say in September, how long do you think it'll take? And if it, what will that mean? Will that mean that the area will be closed to pedestrians, to everyone?
We'll have to work that out with the contractor, another onsite meeting. But my guess is that the project's going to certainly take a good six, eight months, probably easily eight months. But, yep.
Okay. Great. And lastly, if I can lob for a request for some fresh drinking water, maybe for the dogs or for humans in the area, that would be really greatly appreciated. So, thank you so much.
We're working on it.
Yeah, we are working on that.
Awesome.
Yeah. Thank you. Hello. Thank you for coming.
Hi. Yeah, thank you for listening to all of us. My name's Lisa Karaman, and I live at 1 Sherman Avenue. I've lived in Bronxville for about 20 years, but I've been a dog owner for five years. So that's my involvement with the Dog Park. I've been with Jim on some of the walkthroughs, which I really appreciate. It's been very helpful to visualize everything and just to see how the plans have developed. And I really appreciate you taking the time for that. Most of my comments here are related to this, maybe the second step, as you described it, the landscaping step of this. As I understand it, the basic bones of the project are, the really heavy engineering part is kind of set. So I just have a couple of points. One was that as, from the dog owner's point of view at the park, really what they value the most there is just that it's this huge, flat, open space where the dogs can circulate freely, run every direction. There's plenty of space, and they're not really constricted by barriers there. So I'm just asking, as the plan goes forward, to try to keep that in mind, try to retain the free-flowing nature of the space. And my second thing I wanted to ask about was, when it comes to the landscaping side of it, whether it might be possible for the village to consult also with a ecological landscaping company. There's, when you look around the world, there's a lot of cities that have been dealing with the flooding projects. And a lot of them have taken the approach of ecological solutions, meaning both the drainage ditches and that kind of thing, but along with putting the correct kind of plants to absorb the water before it even has to be moved out. So I feel like that would be worth it to look into, especially since this project is probably, you know, it's going to be here for decades, and the storms are only going to be getting more severe or unpredictable in the future. So it might be worth it to look at that approach to this. And then one last thing is, if I can, Ellen Edwards, the head of the Green Committee, she couldn't be here, but I told her I'd just read a statement that she had about the project. This isn't like the official Green Committee statement, but it's her take on, her opinion. And she says, well, she wanted me just to note that it's a little bit difficult to read the plans online at the moment, or just because when you pull up the plans on the computer, everything is really very small and kind of very complicated. So she's saying, "I apologize in advance if I've misunderstood anything looking at these plans. I have two significant concerns about the proposed project, both of which stem from the plan's focus on moving water into and then away from the Alfredo Park area. Everything I've said about flood mitigation in, everything I've read about flood mitigation in urban suburbs such as Bronxville, and all the webinars I've attended on the subject, indicates that flooding occurs in large part because, one, we have a high percentage of hardscape that flooding, that sends the water straight into the storm sewer system, overburdening the pipes and rivers. Secondly, storms are becoming more intense and drop more rain in a short period of time. A significant solution to both problems is to capture the water, retain it, and direct it into the ground where it can percolate through the soil, becoming cleaned of toxins in the process. The point is to keep as much water as possible out of the storm sewer system. This and other strategies that make use of natural processes are sometimes called green infrastructure, and they focus on directing the water in the ground. As far as I can tell, the Crawford Project employs some aspects of green infrastructure, but includes two significant details that might lessen its effectiveness. As described to me, the Crawford Project includes taking down many, perhaps even most, of the trees in the northern, wettest section of Alfredo Park, and constructing channels to collect and direct the water southward through the park and into storm sewer pipes. This aspect of the project seems to contradict common sense, as trees, especially the mature trees, soak up thousands of gallons of water, and swampy areas are nature's way of capturing lots of water. Many who frequent the park know that this section, the most northern part section of the park, is one of the last natural areas in all of Bronxville. It includes many mature trees, as well as other closely spaced trees, all of which we assume absorb a lot of the water after the heavy rain events. By removing the trees and destroying the area's natural ability to soak up the water will potentially add thousands of gallons of water flowing through the park and into the system. Has serious consideration been given to the possibility of keeping this natural area on the north end of the park largely intact and beginning the channel at the edge, at its edge? My second concern has to do with the stones that are supposed to line the channel that will bisect the park. Why are they included? Water will flow only intermittently through this channel, and I'm concerned about weeds growing through the stones. Since maintenance is a challenge, I anticipate the area will look unsightly. The number of volunteers to be able to do this would be too difficult to keep it weed-free. Has the, have the trustees considered hiring a landscape architect or designer who specializes in natural solutions to flood-prone areas to review the plans? Such an expert might be able to suggest ideas involving the stones, landscaping, and a natural wet area to the north that will ensure that the channel slows the water and directs most of it into the ground before additional runoff reaches the sewer pipes. This may be able to address the flooding in a cost-effective way. Alfredo Park is a well-used, beloved park. Many people have noted that the park doesn't flood the way it used to. Even after heavy rain events, the ground has been dry by the next morning. We could surmise that the gardens planted on the perimeter and the trees in the center are soaking up some of the water. As I understand it, the project will direct more water from the surrounding neighborhoods into the park. I urge the trustees to take the extra steps to ensure the major engineering being planned for the park works with nature and not against it to address flooding as effectively as possible. Thanks.
Could you actually give a copy of your statement to Mary Ann? And then we can add it to perhaps the landscape part of it. So, appreciate. Thank you. Thank you. I don't think I took a formal vote. I think, I want to make sure I did that correctly. Did I, I kind of...
I might have had motions, but, yeah.
Yeah, we have motions.
But I don't know, was there a formal vote?
So we're totally approved?
Yeah, we took a formal vote.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Right. We took a formal, you motioned, you seconded, we approved.
Okay.
Ben asked to talk, and then we had the other two as well.
Okay. All righty.
Just a couple of quick comments that I didn't mention. First, as I reminded everyone, this area is remaining as open space. It will be more functioning open space, and this was absolutely a critical part of the plan. During, the ground is very unlevel there, and the water does pool. And this will absolutely make that area function more efficiently, but it will be better functioning as a place of public, open space. That's an important, very important piece to note. And the other piece that I should clarify is, you are approving what we call Phase One. The village's component, as I mentioned, is, you know, you've been working very diligently and communicating with the Town of Eastchester. And the Town of Eastchester is also going to be addressing portions of the Crawford Road line within the Town of Eastchester. So, and the two sets of engineers have been working on that. And then the only other, just to comment on Ellen Edwards, we've, she's been involved in the project, so is certainly aware of it. I've met onsite with all those individuals on multiple occasions. It's probably, but again, as we will do, we will meet onsite again with everyone to try to explain. Unfortunately, I'll just say that area to the north is, there's a serious blockage. And anyone just needs to be out there on a rainy day, because we have the DPW there spending countless hours at midnight pumping water to help save some of the homes, frankly, there. But the existing stormwater line, which goes back decades, is bisecting that area, and the water's landlocked, and frankly, it can't get out. So unfortunately, to remove that stormwater pipe is going to require the removal of trees. But if you go back there after a rain event now, there's, water sits in that area now, again, because it's landlocked, well into late spring. The ducks take up camp there, as you know.
And mosquitoes.
But we will, you know, as Ben said, it's a partnership. We've met out there numerous times over the years. We've taken a lot of comments and refined it, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna keep at it.
Thank you. Yeah, and just two quick comments. I mean, you know, Ellen, you know, is very, very sharp on a lot of these issues, as sharp as anyone in the village. And I know you have been in touch with her, but with respect to that northern section of the area in question, I'm not convinced that that was always a swamp. I think that area actually had natural drainage before other improvements, including improvements at Sironoy, et cetera, were made. But now, it is a closed-in pond. That area, that is in that sort of wooded area, is really a very unattractive swamp. It is not used by anyone for any purpose. It's not good for a nature study preserve. It's presently taken over by kudzu. I mean, kudzu, right? Which is like the terribly invasive plant. I mean, if we didn't go in, I mean, that area should be stripped and re-landscaped in any event. And although there are a lot of trees there, as Ellen says, a lot of them are just sort of scrawny sapling trees that have sort of been planted with no long-term plan. I'm not even sure how many of them are native trees. And so in response to that comment, I think our objective, Jim, as you and I have discussed, is to try to build it back better and create a space that is functional, that people can actually use and enjoy, because it's really sort of...
Unsightly.
Unsightly and not serving any useful purpose. And so I think we can get a lot of value from that space, when frankly, we're getting no value from it at present.
Okay. All right. I will move the next one. It's approving additional funding for downtown tree pits. Back in 2022, we started putting its organic material around our trees. We had issues with grates that lifted up, sidewalks that lifted. Frankly, we had a lot of lawsuits because of the uneven pavement. So we went to a program of an organic material, and the merchants like it, the residents like it, because you can actually move a stroller and people can walk together. Anyway, this is just a continuation of a program of sprucing up our tree pits. And it would involve an outlay for upgrades of $75,000 to repair some of them that are three years old, and actually put some new ones, where I think you've seen some very unattractive, frankly, tree pits. So could I have a motion to keep this project going?
I'll move it.
And a second?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we're going to end on one more drainage project, because we promised to everyone in this village, we would look at different areas in the community, to the folks over on Parkway Road. We are still working with the federal government, because the Bronx River involves a whole different can of worms in terms of trying to do repairs. We have to have every kind of approval, starting frankly... We have to have every kind of approval, starting frankly with FEMA and the government. But we haven't forgotten those folks. This is just the start of a capital project up on Hemlock. And Jim, if you want to give just a little description, this is the early stages for an engineer.
Right, sure. And so, just at this point, you're just authorizing the title search work, so we can determine if there's, the village has easements there for where there are drainage systems that are located on private property. I haven't been able to find any records on those. So, obviously, before we can start doing work on private property, we need to determine what rights we have. So, title search is important, and then also survey to be able to determine which utilities are there, what utilities are around the drainage structures. And this is for Hemlock Road, which takes a significant amount of water from Hawthorne, which takes water from Studio. Not everyone thinks about it, but water from Studio goes to the low point. What isn't, what doesn't come down Hemlock from Studio goes to Hawthorne, and Hawthorne really has a belly. And there were never any sanitary sewer lines or stormwater lines put in up and over Hawthorne, obviously, because then it wouldn't be a gravity system. So, instead, the stormwater and sanitary sewer systems make a sharp 90-degree turn and go through private property where they go out to Hemlock with a very minimal pitch. And the DPW works real hard at, again, cleaning these systems. When we say there's not much of a pitch, you're talking a foot on a good day. But, you know, this is what was designed 100 years ago. But those systems, the drainage, again, gets over to Hemlock, works its way down, and that comes down with velocity and force. And over time, some of those channels were enclosed, and there's still open channels. So, work getting started. Residents there, too, have been real patient, but it's yet another level of complexity, because we don't have specifically defined ownership of that area. So, it's tracing back what the village has maintained over the years and working with councils. So, thank you for starting this process.
So, it's AJ who we've used quite a bit through the village to do our flood, storm sewage management.
Yes, yeah. But in this case, right, we're hiring a title, right, the title, the title search company.
And then AJ do the survey.
Actually, the survey, we usually do, use TC Merits out of Pleasantville. They do great work. We try to stick with the same surveying companies that were used 50, 75 years ago. And these surveys, of course, are amazingly useful. We'll put them into our GIS system, because the goal is, for 100 years from now, all these, you know, simultaneously, we're mapping all these systems to get them digitized, so that in the future, 50 years from now, someone's out in the field, and they know exactly where everything is, what the village has rights to, what we don't have responsibilities for.
Okay, I was mistaken.
All right. So, I'll move it. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Before we close, if anybody wants to comment on anything at all, what we discussed or not discussed, you are most welcome to before I have a motion to close.
And then I would only ask, Mayor, if we could go into an executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Okay. We didn't finish our work at our work session. Yes?
If I could just have a quick...
Could you come just to the microphone, because it doesn't get recorded?
If I could just have a quick, after the session closes, just a quick, two-minute conversation with Jim. I really just need an elaboration. I'm having trouble interpreting the map. So, and I think that that would suffice my questions about the Crawford Basin.
Okay. So, absolutely. Connect with Jim. Certainly.
And then, Mayor, the next meeting, we don't have a meeting in August.
Yeah, that's important to note. We never have a meeting in August. Traditionally, we frankly do that, because residents, there are so many residents not here. And years ago, they asked us not to have an August meeting, because there would be topics that people cared deeply about, and we're not here. And they would come back for school and find out something happened. So, it's quite deliberate that we don't meet in August. So, our next meeting is...
September 8.
September 8. All right. So, do I have a motion to close our July meeting?
No.
And a second?
Close the public meeting.
Yeah, the public.
Oh, very important, to close the public meeting and continue the executive session on personnel. All righty?
So, move.
And a second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you all for coming.